I have a letter here of excuse of tonight.
Ken Raci.
President.
Gerald Ignasch.
Here.
Darren Sprague.
Here.
Todd Tolaske.
Here.
Mayor.
Here. Need a motion to check, uh, set the agenda as presented.
I'll make that move.
I'll represent that.
All in favor? Opposed?
Five zero approved.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes of October 8th, 2018, regular meeting.
I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
All in favor? Opposed?
Five zero approved.
Thank you.
Yep.
Resolution number 2018 dash...
We need to make the motion for...
I'm sorry. A motion to excuse. Please.
I support it.
All in favor? Opposed?
Five zero approved.
Thank you. Resolution number 2018 dash 65. Invoices to approve amount as presented paid through November 8th, 2018. Hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifteen cents. Pending approval, twelve thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and three cents for a total of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and eighteen cents.
So move.
Of course.
Any discussion?
There was one, uh... On the second page there down at the bottom, uh, check number nineteen one seventy-four, village of Seabwing Road sold at nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Is that a one-time thing or...?
It's something we do every year. Uh, we split a load of salt in to save money.
Yeah.
And they, they get it in there and take care of it and we go there and pick it our, our bumpers.
But I mean, is that all that we're gonna have to pay this year?
No, we're gonna get some more. There'll be a little bit more, probably.
I think it depends on the year, too.
Depends on the year, but our bumpers are full, so we only get a little bit at times.
Right, uh, seems to me last meeting, what were we paying in coal constructions to apply coal? Seems like we paid that last month, too.
Um, I might...
Ten dollars.
Yeah, it's on the very bottom first page. Coal construction, applied coal, ten dollars. I thought, plus I've had this since Friday and I seen it.
I think there was a couple different items, but the prices were pretty close.
The one you saw before was for the railing that was fabricated by Ridge.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
I see aluminum metal for that.
Okay. Yep.
Anything else? Well call, please.
Raci.
Yes.
Ignasch.
Yes.
Sprague.
Yes.
Tolaske.
Yes.
So...
Yes.
Five zero approved.
Thank you. And now you will have a presentation from Brighton Council, CPA, that does audit, sir.
Thank you. And good evening.
Good evening.
Um, we'll be looking at the audit of the city, uh, at the end of the fiscal year, which was June 30th, 2018. Now, I've handed out about three different things here tonight. Um, the full look folder, that's the official audit report, uh, for the city for the fiscal year 2018. And along with that was a letter, that's a required communication to the council that, uh, covers several things related to the audit. And then for tonight's presentation, I, um, handed out also a little packet. It's a lot shorter than that official report, so hopefully it'll help us, uh, go a little quicker tonight. So we'll actually be looking at this little packet here, um, to cover the numbers for the city. On that front page, what we have is, um, it's called a statement of net position. It's really the balance sheet of the city. And it's the city as a whole. It's all the funds added together, all the assets, all the liabilities. Um, so you can see at June 30th, um, basically where the city was at as far as those items. And it's also comparative. That's one thing about the, the audit report, uh, there's so much information in it that you really can't, um, go side by side, you know, showing the changes from one year to the next where I've been able to do that with this little synopsis here that I put together. So it does show the, uh, the amounts for June 30th, 2017, and then also at 2018. And then there's a little, uh, the third column there is for items that had significant changes. You can see what that change was. For instance, you know, total assets, uh, went from twelve million, five hundred thousand to twelve million, six sixty-eight. Uh, the city's assets increased a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for one year to the next. And that took place in a couple areas there. Uh, the current assets increased by ninety-three thousand and restricted assets increased by ninety-eight thousand. Now, the restricted assets, that's mainly that's cash that is set aside. Some of it's required by a third party, say your, your bondholders. Uh, there's requirements that you have to have money set aside for the bonds. Uh, some of that is decisions that the council has made. They want money set aside for certain projects in the future and so, um, that, those funds increased by ninety-eight thousand dollars for the year. And then capital assets, it doesn't show them out there, but it, it did go down by about twenty thousand dollars, um, as a result of depreciation. Assets were added, but they're also being depreciated as they wear out. And so there really wasn't a significant change in that number, although it did go down some. The next line is deferred outflows. That's a number that's related to your, uh, pension and the pension liability. It really represents expenses that are gonna get paid in the future related to that pension. And that, and those did increase by a hundred and three thousand dollars, uh, that amount did, but, uh, a little bit farther down, we're gonna see that overall, uh, your liability for the pension actually decreased. So you, you went in the right direction, uh, on the retirement. We'll look at that in a minute here. Uh, liabilities overall decreased by three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. They went from, you know, almost five point nine million to about five point five. There's a big decrease in the current liabilities, went from four oh nine to about one thirty-seven. And then also the long-term debt decreased by seventy-six thousand dollars as you paid off bonds and, and long-term debt. And then, so that basically gives the equity of the city, that net position right in the middle of the page there. Now went from six billion, seven ninety-five to seven million, four seventy-eight. An increase of six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Now, that's a pretty significant increase. Your city grew basically by about nine percent. You know, so it was a good year for the city overall, and we'll get into more detail on that. But you can see all three categories increased. Um, your investment and capital assets increased by two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Again, the restricted assets increased, or I should say the, the restricted net assets. And then just for operating purposes, just the general fund balance available went from five hundred and twenty-two thousand to eight, just over eight hundred thousand, two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar increase. And then after that, um, we talked about some increases in the capital assets. Um, here's the list of what was added to your capital assets during the fiscal year ended in 2018. Uh, the Breakwater Park project. Um, at June 30th, it still wasn't completed, so it's classified as construction in progress. But through June 30th, there was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars invested in that project. And that's the one that's basi- basically financed by a grant from the state. Uh, the city hall here, you did some improvements to the parking lot, put in some LED streetlights. Those total fifty-seven thousand. Uh, pickup was purchased for the DPW, twenty thousand. Uh, some tools and equipment was purchased for the water system, about fifteen thousand, and then some other miscellaneous items that added up to about thirty-nine thousand. So about five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of hard physical assets were added to the city during the fiscal year. Another positive, long-term debt, uh, is, is the next section. Um, there's two categories. There's the governmental long-term debt, and that includes, uh, the OXPO bonds, which you can see were paid off during the fiscal year. Um, in 2017, there was a balance of fifteen thousand dollars, and then the final payment was made during fiscal 2018. Uh, the city has a couple drain assessments. Um, the Campout Drain went from twenty-two thousand to sixteen thousand, and that's scheduled to pay off in 2020. Now, the Pigeon River went from a hundred and sixty thousand to about a hundred and forty-five, and that's scheduled to be done in 2026. And then the DDA, um, bonds for that project that took place a number of years ago, um, at today's date, it's actually paid off. Final payment was made back in September, uh, but at June 30th, only sixty thousand dollars was outstanding for the DDA bonds. But as I say, in September, those were paid off. So you were able to, uh, as of June 30th, reduce those bonds and debt by a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Now, the water in the sewer also has some long-term debt. They each have a bond issue, and combined, that debt would decrease by a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. So that's a total decrease in debt of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for the fiscal year. So another significant positive for the city. Um, and then that final section is some information on the, on the retirement system. Uh, the total pension liability, it did grow. Um, it went from about two point seven million to about two point nine. So the liability did increase by two hundred and sixteen thousand. But then there's assets that have been contributed and are set aside to make those, to pay that liability. And that went from one million, nine eighty-one to about two point two million. So your assets, including earnings, um, grew by two hundred and fifty-three thousand. So your retirement assets grew more than the liability, which again brought that total liability down, uh, for the city then. And in combination of a lot of things goes into that, um, you know, good stock market year is what those numbers are based on, and so that's more earnings for the plan. Uh, the city's been making extra contributions. Those kind of things all, um, are factors in that decrease in, in liability there. And in fact, I got the contributions listed there. In fiscal 2017, they were about eighty-four thousand, and then in fiscal 18, um, you contributed about a hundred and seven thousand dollars towards the, the retirement. So that's kind of a snapshot picture as of June 30th, and then page two, again, we're looking at the city as a whole, uh, but this is the activity for the fiscal year. The revenue that comes in and then the expenses that were paid out, uh, by the city for the last two fiscal years. In 2017, uh, the total revenues were two million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, and in, um, 2018, that was three million, sixty-eight thousand. So again, a pretty significant increase there. But again, a lot of that goes back to that second line, our capital grants, that three hundred and one thousand dollars. That's the grant money that was received for that Breakwater Park during the fiscal year, so... So that's the main reason for the increase in total revenue. Another item that increased citywide, uh, the property taxes went from six hundred and fourteen thousand to seven hundred and fourteen thousand. Again, a hundred thousand dollar increase, but a lot of that is the city passed, uh, a street millage that was collected during 18, that was effective for 18. And that was, what, sixty-some thousand of it right there, um, was your street millage that came in. So that's, uh, the increase in property taxes. Uh, revenue from the state, um, the regular revenue sharing was about the same. It increased a couple thousand dollars, but there were some other items that came in from the state. Uh, so it went from a hundred and twenty-nine thousand to a hundred and fifty-nine thousand for the fiscal year. And then there's some other miscellaneous items there that are collected to make up that total revenue. So, um, revenues increased by, you know, almost three hundred thousand dollars, but total expenses only increased about twenty thousand dollars. Okay? Two point three million, three sixty-four, and their, the total for 18 was two million, three eighty-five. So that's about a twenty-one thousand dollar increase. Um, and then the detail is listed there. So most of the categories are pretty comparable there. The general government, public safety, public works. Um, in some cases, they actually went down, those expenses. In other areas, they're pretty close, highways and streets. Uh, one that did increase is recreation and culture. That's, includes the parks, uh, went from sixty-two thousand to a hundred and eight. So along with that project, uh, at the, at the parks, you know, there were some extra expenses that had to be paid along, uh, along with that. So that's, that's the, um, category that probably had the most significant increase. For water, we do see an increase in expenses, nine hundred and fifty-four thousand to nine hundred and eighty. And then the sewer actually went down, the operating expenses, three hundred and seventy-two thousand to three fifty-eight. We'll get into some more detail on an individual basis, fund by fund, in just a couple minutes, but again, these numbers are, are the city as a whole. And so in 2017, basically the, the city grew by three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and in fiscal 18, it grew by that six hundred and eighty-three thousand amount that I talked about before. So a significant increase, another positive amount for the city. You know, one of the main revenue sources for the city is charges for services, whether it's for the sewer, the water, or even, um, the general fund has charges for services. And most of that is from the general fund to those other departments of the city. And so that revenue source generates about a million, six seventy-one for the city. Really about the same from year to year, you can see there, but there are some changes in each individual item there that you'll be able to note there. And then the, the property tax, the taxable value for the city, uh, actually did decrease a little bit for 2018. Uh, went from thirty-six million, three eighty-seven to thirty-six million, one thirty-four, about a point seven, uh, decrease, percent decrease in the, in the property taxable value.
It's odd that property tax values, values are going down right now, isn't it?
Well, remember, it's...
There's been a lot of sales. I mean, things have been picked up after the last few years.
Yeah, um, I guess one thing to keep in mind is for 18, in fact, it's a tax of 2017, so that there's, because of the fiscal year, you know, when the taxes are levied, there's about a year lag on that kind of stuff, too.
Okay.
Um, so that could explain it. And remember, you know, taxable value is based on a formula now and not so much market value like it used to be. So market value can go up and down. In fact, there's, you know, we had the situation where market values were going down, but taxable values were still going up because of the formula. I mean, so the two really don't correlate that much anymore. Okay?
But it should stay more even than, right?
Yeah. I mean, the way the formula is, the maximum increase is like cost of living or inflation up to five percent. So five percent is the most the taxable value can go up, unless there is a change of ownership or something like that. Uh, but just on a formula basis, it's, it's limited on how much it can go up, but...
And that per year, right?
Yes, each year, right.
Okay.
Okay, on page three then, we'll start to look at each fund. This is the general fund, uh, general operations of the, of the city. Total revenues in 2017 were a million and nineteen thousand. Um, in 2018, they were one million, three ninety-six. And so that's a three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar increase in the revenues. And again, it gets back to that grant for the park project. Uh, that's a three hundred and eight thousand dollar increase in your state revenues. Uh, the general tax millage did go up by about twenty-seven thousand dollars. And so those two items, you know, explain most of the difference there. Uh, for the expenditures, um, for the general government, and that includes, you know, the legislative, the city office here, buildings and grounds, elections, those kind of things, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, uh, in fiscal 17 went, actually went down by three hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, excuse me, they went down to three hundred and twenty thousand. Um, in fiscal 18. Um, and I see I got a little printing problem here, um, as far as that funded percentage is not supposed to be there, that line item, uh, nor the next item. Um, the next category is public safety, and that includes the police department and fire. Uh, pretty even from year to year, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand to two thirty-eight, so not a big change in those items. Public works, that's the DPW, uh, two hundred and forty-three thousand compared to two twenty-six, about a sixteen thousand dollar decrease in those expenditures. Economic development, that's the planning and zoning. Board of Appeals, those items, thirty-two thousand. They did go up to forty-six thousand for the year. Looks like the big change was in the Board of Appeals and the economic development categories where the increases were. Uh, the ambulance service was the same from year to year, forty-six hundred dollars. Recreation of the parks went from twenty-six thousand to seventy thousand. That's the additional costs related, uh, to the park projects. Uh, the library expenditures were only five hundred dollars for the fiscal year. And then again, the amounts that were, that were paid for their, your capital assets under capital outlay, um, in the general fund, that totaled five hundred and sixteen thousand. Um, and there, the breakdown is there. And again, you can see the biggest item is that Breakwater Grant Project, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars spent through the fiscal year. Uh, general fund also makes some debt service expenditures. They're pretty even from year to year, uh, right around twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's the payment on those, uh, drain projects that comes out of the general fund. Uh, so we do see a significant increase in expenditures, nine hundred and four to a million, four fifty, but remember, um, most of that increase is those capital assets, which is actually adding to the city as a whole. And so overall, then the general fund did increase its fund balance by about fifty-seven thousand dollars, and so it ended the year at two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, so that's a good, healthy fund balance for the city. You're getting probably about twenty percent of your expenditure is now built up into fund balance, which is a pretty good, a pretty good place to be there. Okay, uh, page five is just a little bit more information. Uh, basically it's a breakdown of fund balance for the general fund. Fund balance went from a hundred and sixty-seven thousand to that two hundred and twenty-five. And most of that increase is in the, uh, the on assign category, which is, that's the money that's available for day-to-day operations for the general fund of the city. Okay, page six is the Major Street Fund. In 2017, the revenues were seventy-six thousand compared to eighty-three thousand in fiscal 18, and most of that money comes from the state, uh, either the gas and weight tax or the reimbursements that you get for the state trunk line. That's most of that revenue there. Um, expenditures were fifty thousand in 2017, and they increased, uh, to fifty-seven, one oh two, about a sixty-eight hundred dollar increase. Uh, just regular maintenance, twenty-six thousand, winter maintenance, eighty-eight hundred. The trunk line was nineteen thousand. So you can see you're, you're spending more in the trunk line than you're getting reimbursed from the state. That's pretty typical, yeah. You're not the only one, so I've seen it before, so... And then some administration costs for the street, uh, activities. But you did increase, uh, the, the fund balance for Major Street by twenty-six thousand, bringing that up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then on page seven is the Local Street Fund. Um, in 2017, the, the revenue was eighty-three thousand, uh, compared to about forty-three thousand. So we're seeing a decrease in revenue, but it's really, it's more of a change in accounting related to that county road tax. You'll see in just a minute here, the next page, where that's being accounted for. In the past, those, that county road millage that you receive from here in county, um, it was kind of split and, and put into, some of it was put into local and some of it was put into the Major Street Fund. Well, now because you've got your own city millage, um, we set up a new fund basically to allow some flexibility on where those monies goes. Cause the problem is, once you lock it into one of the funds, either local or major, it has to stay there. But we set up a fund that gives you the flexibility to be able to move that money where it needs to. So if the project is in the Major Street one year, then the money can go there to cover that project cost. If it's in Local Street the next year, then the money can go there. So it's just a way to, um, to give flexibility to where the, to use the fund. So in the past, in 17, the road millage is showing here in the Local Street, uh, but in 18, it's in this new fund that's on the next page. So that's why the revenue really didn't go down, I guess, is what I'm trying to explain here. It's just in a different fund. Uh, the expenditures for local streets were almost identical, forty-three thousand, eight hundred to forty-three, seven. And it's kind of a break, break even really. There's a small decrease in fund balance of, of six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, but really a break even on the local streets. So fund balance really didn't change, uh, from year to year on the local streets. Okay, page eight is that new fund that I've been talking about, uh, this municipal street tax. What's going in there is the, uh, the street millage that the city passed, and that was sixty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars was collected, uh, for that millage during fiscal 18. And then the county road millage is going in there. So, um, there's a hundred thousand dollars of street money available to go in, like I said, either into major or local, wherever the project needs are. Okay? If that money went into one or the other, like I say, it's locked in there. You can't move it from local to major or major to local. So this gives the flexibility to move it where it needs to go by doing this. So, um, there, this fund didn't exist in 2017, so that's why there's no numbers there. It was created, um, here in fiscal 18, and nothing was transferred out, and so that's why there's a hundred thousand dollars available, um, for fiscal 19 really just to use if need be. Okay? Page nine is the Downtown Development Authority. Um, it receives property taxes, um, through a couple. There's a two-mill, uh, millage that, for the DDA, and then there's also that TIPA millage that was created, uh, to collect taxes from the district to make the bond payments. And so for fiscal 18, eighty-nine thousand dollars of property taxes was received. And then under the expenditures, uh, there's eighty-five thousand is the principal payment that was made during the fiscal year, and then fifteen hundred dollars of interest. And so, um, ninety-two thousand was the total expenditures for DDA, fund balance. So it did, uh, for the DDA, it did. So it did, for the DDA, decide what they want to do in the future here. Moving on, page 10 is the debt service fund, this is the Oxbow fund. Let's see here, there's really not property taxes, but there's special assessments were collected from the Oxbow district to make the bond payments. And so in the final year here, 17,151 of special assessments were collected and then that final bond payment was $15,000 plus $300 of interest. And so it ended with about $22,400 of fund balance left over. So you basically collected more than what the debt payments were over the, over the term of those bonds. And so what's, you're gonna, what you're gonna have to do is basically, there's gonna have to be some research done on what you can do with that money. Because it was related to debt service, there's only certain things that that money can be used for. And you're probably gonna have to get some advice from a, a bond attorney or something like that on just exactly what you do with this $22,000. But again, that, that bond issue was done, it was done in fiscal 18, the final payment was made, so. Page 11 is the capital projects. This is the monies that, again, some of it is required by the bond issue, some of it is when the council decides to set money aside for future projects. The, the assets that have been set aside earned about $300 of interest for the year. And then during fiscal 18, $109,000 was set aside for various items. And then we see a hu, a transfer out of $133,000. Most of that went out to the general fund back for that park project. So that $450,000 that was spent, 300,000 of it was the grant and then about 100, 100 and some thousand was from the money that was set aside from the past to finance that. So that's kind of where that money came from for that $450,000. And so there's still $768,000 of, of assets that have been set aside for future projects basically in the capital projects funds. That completes the governmental funds of the city. Now we're getting into the, they're called enterprise funds. This would be the sewer and the water and the equipment rental. These are kind of like, they ran like businesses almost, that's why they call them enterprise funds. And so for the sewer, the charges for services went from 194,000 in 17 to 208,800 in fiscal 18, about a $14,000 increase in the charges for services. The operating expenses actually went down by about $6,400 and ended up at 309. So there was a smaller operating loss in the sewer by 20,000. There was, the operating loss was still 100,000. But then there's also some additional revenues, non-operating revenues that are received for debt service. Some of the sewer charges are earmarked for debt retirement, that's 164,000. And that's reduced by the interest on the bonds, so 58,000. And so at that point, there was a, an increase in fund balance, about $6,600. But then $5,200 was transferred out to that capital project fund. Decision has been made to put some money aside for future sewer projects, cleaning the lagoons I know is one of them. And so the fund balance did increase by about $1,400 in 2018, but that's compared to a decrease of $22,000. So that's really a significant increase for the sewer fund, by 23,000. Okay, and then next is the water fund on page 13. Excuse me. That's, the fund balance is on page 13 for the sewer fund. Went from 2,373. Again, it only increased by that $1,400, $1,400, but if you look at, excuse me, the unrestricted line, again, that's for day-to-day operations of the sewer fund. It went from 71,000 to 118,000. And that's because of depreciation really. That depreciation expense gets charged against capital assets.
Just about 6,500.
Okay, yep.
And then change in net position was 23,000, correct?
Yep.
So would that include that, that, that's included in that?
Yes, yes. It would be, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, the water fund is on page 14. Revenue for the water fund did decrease about 58,000. The charges for services went from 1,818,000 down to 960,000. There were fewer gallons billed out during fiscal 18, excuse me, to explain the decrease in revenue. However, at the same time, operating expenses increased by 63,000. They went from 869,000 to 933. The main increases there were in salaries and benefits, they increased the most, combination of 25,000 for those items. Depreciation was almost identical from year to year. Operating supplies were up about 5,000, utilities were up about 9,000. So those are some of the main categories where our operating expenses increased. There still was an operating income of 29,000 for water though, but it was down from 150,000. There is interest expense on the, on the bonds, the water bonds, 115,000. And so before transfers, there was a loss of 85,000. And then another 83,000 was transferred again to the capital projects for future water projects. And so we do see a, a significant decrease in the fund balance of 169,000 compared to 52,000 the year before. But again, a lot of that was depreciation. And so at the bottom of the page there for, again, for day-to-day operations, the fund balance actually increased by 20,000, went from 226 to 247. And that's because that 286,000 of depreciation expense gets charged to that net investment in capital assets. And it doesn't go against day-to-day operations. And then the last item is the equipment rental fund on page 15. There's more activity in the equipment rental this year, again, related to the park project, use some of your own equipment, a lot more than past years. Went from 88,000 of revenue to about 106. And along with that, operating expenses went from 104,000 to about 124. There was some interest earned in the sale of assets and so it did decrease fund balance by about 13,000. But there's still $552,000 of fund balance available for, again, operations of the equipment and future equipment purchases. Again, the fund, that 552 is broke down, 367 for capital assets and then 184,000 for day-to-day operations. So again, we're seeing an increase there and again, it's because depreciation is getting charged against the capital asset number. So there's still a lot of funds available for equipment rental, for any new equipment that needs to be purchased in the future. Any questions, I guess?
It's like we're in good shape.
Yes, it was a positive here for the city, so congratulations. Saw some significant increases. And the ones that did increase really didn't, you know, didn't cause harm, I guess, you might say, so. I guess as far as the audit, after doing our audit procedures, we are, we're able to render the, it's called a non-modified opinion, it's the highest opinion that we're allowed by our standards to issue. So you basically receive that passing grade that you're looking for and the state of Michigan is looking for from its local, you know, towns and villages, that's what they want to see, so, so you've achieved that also, so congratulations.
Thank you.
What do you think the main thing that we need to keep an eye on the sewer?
A little bit, yep, but I still, I think, you know, some significant progress was made even in the sewer because it, it is positive this year overall.
It's positive, but still behind.
Yeah, sure. You know, and, yeah, it's positive, but the system got a year older too, so, right. You got that to think about.
So that's one of the things we need to keep thinking about.
Yeah, it's that replacement or maintenance and stuff that you gotta, that you know, that you gotta have with an older system as it grows older, so. And how do you find anything to happen? Okay, that would conclude my presentation for tonight, so.
Thank you very much, we all appreciate it.
Yeah. Once again, thank you for hiring our firm to be your auditor, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would certainly like to come up, comment and thank the council for putting us in such good shape. And the office and the DPW, you and everybody, we've all worked together on this. Thank you so much. Any comments on the reports from the zoning administration, downtown development, senior citizen, harbor commission, advisory board, anything on that?
We had a meeting and we're going to do some repairs on our number unit two, which involved some overings replacements. And we decided to go through and do the whole unit because they're in pretty tough shape, but we didn't want to have that ripple effect once we got in there, we wanted to clear it off. So we're still waiting on parts for that.
Good, thank you. Fire protection, our election commission. How'd the election go, Laura?
Went well, well, I think that this was the highest, right, Jean?
373 people turned out to vote for the city, which is one of the highest numbers I can ever recall here.
Morning of the president?
Had 100.
Yes, oh yeah, last year there was 200 and, or presidential one, I think there was like 240 somewhere in that ballpark.
I don't know why.
Yeah.
It was 130 absentee.
Praise the Lord.
130 absentee ballots and then the rest were blocking, so.
That was good, that was good. That was a good turnout.
Wonderful. Committee reports, DPW, anything more on that?
DPW, mine and here on the street were paved. And we just finished up last week our fall sewer lagoon discharge. That's done for the year.
Thank you.
Streets are all good, Ben?
Good. Employing relations, anything on that?
We reached a tentative agreement with the staff. We do have a follow-up appointments with our full-time police officer and for our supervisors that have come up in the next week or two.
Thank you. Finance, clerk, anything?
Just a note with the roads that Troy brought up that we paved, the initial estimated cost on them with the changes was 110,000 for cost. They ended up invoicing us 99,324 cents. So it came in quite a bit under what they anticipated, so that's good news.
That's good.
Thank you. Chief, anything?
I'll just let everybody know we did cut back on our part-time for the winter. We'll still have part-time, we'll be mainly on the weekends, so.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion to file the reports as presented?
So moved.
All favor. Opposed?
Fine, zero, approved.
Thank you. Our correspondence has a letter from the chamber. On Saturday, December 1st, 2018, the Caseville area Chamber of Commerce would like to host and promote, thank you Troy, would like to host and promote Christmas in Caseville. As we did last year, we are combining events to fall on the same day. We're still confirming the events. However, we're confident that schedule will remain the same. Lunch with Santa at the Eagles, movie matinee at Riverside Community Church, and Noel Night at the city memorial park. In each event, visitors will be invited to participate in the Caseville Community Christmas Fun by bringing gifts, clothing, such as hats, mittens and scarves, paper products, non-perishable food items and canned goods for underprivileged area residents. Lunch with Santa will begin at the Caseville Eagles Hall at 11:30 when Santa arrives by fire truck. Movie matinee will begin at 1 o'clock. Noel Night Caroling will be led by Caseville School Music Department and will begin at 5:00 PM with the lighting of the Christmas, Caseville Christmas tree. We're planning to have grade school students from Caseville decorate the tree on the morning of November 30th, which will be set up by the DPW in the Weaver soap leading up to Noel Night. In addition to the excellent snow removal services provided throughout the entire Ballantyne area by the DPW, we would also like to request extra attention to be paid Saturday morning to the sidewalks and the apron areas of the city memorial park gazebo. Due to the much-needed warmth for Noel Night, we would like permission to build a small bonfire to be contained in a portable metal fire pit. If you have any questions, please contact Michelle Lowers at the chamber office. And I will have public comments. Let's start, start down with the lady again, any comments?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Veterans Day. Appreciate, I don't know about anybody else here, I know Clyde and Mr. Rachi are veterans and I appreciate their service, they're fine gentlemen.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the opportunity that you afford us to show up in these public comments and public meetings. And I wanted to thank the chief for letting us know that we are indeed getting cut back on our police force for the winter. I think that is something the public should know so that we can afford to voice our opinions, concerns and ask questions. So thank you for letting us know that.
Thank you.
In light of the budget presentation, one of our major assets, I think would be the sound studio, is the latest on that.
No change. No change from last time, still for sale.
And list building, anybody?
The building committee hasn't met to do that yet.
It seems very responsible to me, your, your major assets up there and not having to have just.
Thank you.
Troy, I'd ask about Huron Street, it's done? Has anybody talked to the people who live on Huron Street? I'm just asking.
I thought it looked pretty nice.
Okay.
Done?
Yeah, I'd like for me to look at it.
Yeah, I thought that was a great report by the auditor. What it means is my rates aren't going to go up and that's always great, always in a pass. They always recommend to raise the sewer rate up, raise the water rate up.
Now that's a good idea.
By God, unless you guys need some extra money, but that's all I got to say.
Chief, anything? You've got this. Motion to approve the assessor as the official designated to conduct land divisions and combinations for the city as prescribed under city ordinance twelve twenty-four point zero four.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Five zero, approve.
Thank you. Motion to approve the request of the Chamber of Commerce to build a small warming fire in itself-contained portable metal fire pit at the city park for the Christmas in Caseville's Noel Night on December first, twenty eighteen.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support it.
Any comments?
They've done it every year, they've done it for years. Pardon me?
What do you know, you like the program?
Yeah, okay.
That was the comment.
All in favor? Opposed?
Five zero, approve.
Thank you. So glad we got that all the way. Resolution twenty eighteen dash sixty-six to approve the agreement with Steel Workers' Health and Welfare Fund for insurance for the employees for January first, twenty nineteen through December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, average decrease is five percent.
Don't move. I'm seconding that.
Any discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Ignace?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Tolaske?
Yes.
Belz?
Yes.
Rachi?
Yes.
Five zero, approve.
Thank you. Resolution twenty eighteen dash sixty-seven to opt out of the state of Michigan twenty percent co-pay requirement for health insurance by offering Blue Cross Blue Shield HDHP policy administered by Hallmark, excuse me, Highmark, through the Indiana Steel Workers' Health and Welfare Fund for full-time employees as stated in the collective bargaining agreements and supervisor employment agreements. The employee contribution will be twenty-six dollars per week beginning January twenty nineteen.
Don't move. Seconding that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sprague?
Yes.
Tolaske?
Yes.
Belz?
Yes.
Rachi?
Yes.
Ignace?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Five zero, approve.
Thank you. Resolution twenty eighteen dash sixty-eight to adopt the twenty nineteen federal poverty guidelines for the application for poverty exemption from the current year taxes.
Don't move, I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Tolaske?
Yes.
Belz?
Yes.
Rachi?
Yes.
Ignace?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Five zero, approve.
Thank you. Resolution twenty eighteen dash sixty-nine to approve the tentative agreement between the DPW Water Office Union and the city of Caseville. The contract is for the period of January one, twenty nineteen, through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one.
We'll make that motion. Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Belz?
Yes.
Rachi?
Yes.
Ignace?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Tolaske?
Yes.
Five zero, approve.
All the comments, again, we'll start up here, anything?
I noticed there was some trees brought in, Captain's, where are those for the park? For Captain's Park? Captain's property, what about trees for their point cars?
We're waiting to move the boardwalk, and we haven't got approval to move the boardwalk We thought we had approval like two years ago.
Yeah, I knew you did.
How many full-time officers do we have? Just two. Two? All right, well, I would just really like to see those, at least those two taken care of, because I appreciate the fact that during the working hours, I know I can pick up the phone and they're there faster than the fire department, faster than the ambulants, so, I would really like, I hear that there's a negotiation with one of them going, I don't know about you, but I really hope we take care of them.
Thank you.
Should I come in?
Yeah.
The chief is administrator, so his contract is separately from the union one, which is the, the deputy is the, is on the union contract, and we'll be, we're still in negotiations with her.
Okay, thank you.
Clyde?
Yeah, I've got my mind off the ground here, I can't be rushing.
We're back, Clyde.
Oh, I know, yeah, down at the break wall park, where you put those stone strips in, that's parallel to the river, I see you put a bunch of those little green shrubs in there. Are you gonna keep on, keep them all chopped right down? I hope you don't let those things grow.
No, they're low, they're, they're only gonna get so high.
Yeah, they're only gonna grow like eighteen inches, Clyde, that's it.
That's the top.
There you go.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not gonna let it.
I had one that was ten foot tall, and the guy told me it was only gonna be eighteen inches tall.
My mother's telling me.
I'm just saying, you know, that, you know, that's the whole thing to me of that whole break wall park, where you could sit there like it used to be when I first come to Caseville, everybody get your Dairy Queen and go down there and watch the boats go up and down the river.
There will be a few more green items added in there, trees and otherwise, because we do have to have some water.
As long as it's not along the river.
Right, it's not gonna block, water absorbing is what they're for, that's the purpose that that serves.
I just, I just seen all those guys, oh, those suckers don't grow.
There was two reasons, one is people kept backing off the edge of that asphalt breaking.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that was part of the reason to put them.
I mean, it looks great and everything, and you need to have a hit put out on that lady from the DEQ.
Well, I think, we can comment on that. Actually, what, somebody, our, our first person didn't, didn't continue, so, who's that?
Thank you, Clyde.
It's all crazy, I mean, we've got this beautiful project there, and you get one person there that's going wacko on the city of Caseville, it's unbelievable. We all, everybody here ought to write a letter. It's unbelievable, the amount of money that we put in, how beautiful it is, and just for them to turn their stupid boardwalk and clean that up there to make it look nice in downtown Caseville, which is our only asset, where you can go down and look at the water. Everybody, every place else you go around the, around the thumb there, they got big parks there, you can look out at the water, except for Caseville.
Well, it's still in progress.
Huh?
It's still a work in progress.
Did you get in a fight with her, or is that what happened?
Well, it looked like it.
No, I'm just teasing.
You ought to see her.
Thank you for letting me, you might.
That's okay.
Chief, anything?
You getting all these marks? No, I just scratched that one.
In case anybody didn't know, we were featured, featured on Michigan Outdoors Thursday night, they were up here while filming some individuals fishing out on the pier, so they gave us nice props for the improvements at the beginning of that segment, they said if you hadn't been to Caseville in a while, you'd come and see the improvements they made, so it was pretty nice, got a little bit of pier time.
Was it live, or will it be on?
Well, it was recorded, it was their Thursday episode, which was on again Saturday, it's online, if you, if you YouTube Michigan Outdoors episode from Thursday night, you can see it. It's about in the middle of that episode.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Laura, anything?
Nothing.
Todd?
No, I think everything's been discussed.
Michelle?
No, I'm just, I'm glad that the budget went in a positive direction, and I'd like to say thank you to our veterans and family members that are veterans here and past.
Derek?
I'm gonna thank our vets, first of all, I'm married to one, and I tell you, you've done a remarkable job coming home safe for all the stuff that's going on now. Thanks to the public for showing up, I appreciate all your comments, good and bad, and to the employees, the council, everybody, you've done one good job getting us in the black hole. I really commend you on that. It's been a struggle sometimes, but you all did it, so thank you so much.
Move a motion?
All in favor? Opposed? Meeting over, folks, thank you.